For 2020, as National Public Works Week, I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our nation's health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you to our public works for all that you do. Yes, I think we all recognize, particularly in this city, we are a small city and we utilize our public works and have for decades in ways that many other cities could only dream of it. And their expertise, that professionalism not only makes our city more functional, more attractive, but they also save us a lot of money in the process. So we have much to be thankful for with our, our public works unit. Next, though, we'll move from that. We have a public hearing, which is a little weird on Zoom, but we're going to give it a shot anyway. A public hearing tonight, we have a public hearing regarding the city's grant application submittal for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Funding. The process for the public hearing will be as follows. We will start with Community Development Director Brian Dyer to give a staff presentation on the item, and then there will be an opportunity for the council to ask questions. And then, once we are done with council questions, I will open the public hearing. Public comments were accepted via email for this public hearing. So the city clerk will read any comments received into the record, and I will then close the public hearing. So let's start off with Mr. Dyer. You can give your presentation.
I'm promoting Brian right now.
Okay.
There we go.
Hey, Mayor, council members. Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. This evening is the public hearing on the CDBG grant that we apply for every year, pretty much. Real quickly, go through a little bit of the grant process. For those of you who may not have been involved with this in the past, Meredith, put my presentation up there, please. Looks like she's busy with other things, too.
Sorry, David's joining the meeting right now. So I'm just going to give him a second to get over.
All right.
Okay, I'm promoting you to a channel straight now. You should have. Okay, you should be over if you want to turn on your video. Okay, I'm going to keep working with David to get his audio. I'm going to go ahead and start your presentation for you.
All right, thank you, Meredith. There we go. All right. Um, the reason, part of the CDBG grant process is that areas that are at, have a population of 50% or more that are at 80% of the moderate income levels are eligible for the CDBG grant application. The next map here in just a second is going to show you there is a Merriam that allowable for that. But I wanted to first put up the income guidelines just to give everybody a perspective as to what we're talking about when we say that. So the 80% of moderate income, you'll see it on the right-hand side of this. For, so for a person with a family household of one, the income levels are $46,000. And for household level two, $52,000, and so on, and so forth. So if you look at, we go to the next slide. This is a map of the city of Merriam, obviously. And what it shows is the colored areas are the areas that are eligible to receive CDBG block grant, Community Development Block Grant. As you can see, majority of Merriam, except for the area to the east of Antioch, is eligible. But the other thing to note here is because Johnson County is an affluent county, affluent county, Community Development or HUD, excuse me, not Community Development, Block Grant or HUD reduces the amount and the percentages that are eligible for CDBG. So instead of, for Johnson County, it's 52.75%. So essentially, they've lowered the standard for the participation of the CDBG block grant. So the area and the project we're looking to do this year is Milburn West. It's the area that circles out at the bottom of the map. Meredith, if you could forward to the next one. Here's a close-in view of what we're looking to do. Again, Milburn West. We can remove 20 of the traditional Cobra headlights and replace them with 31 lights. The lights will be much lower, much more pedestrian-friendly. Next slide there, Meredith. Here is the budget. This bad budget for the project. We're asking applying for $70,000 in CDBG block grant. The project's a lot of $188,000 projects. So the remaining $118,000 will be funded through the CIP program and also done through Public Works Labor that they provide for the project. Next slide, Meredith. This is kind of an overview of, just to let everybody know, these are existing Cobra headlights that the public works that we're moving and replacing with, next slide there, Meredith. Replace them with our traditional residential streetlights. They will be LEDs. So again, provides a better lighting, provides, makes the neighborhood safer. Obviously, visibility is a big thing, also. Gets pedestrians out, makes folks, will make them more walkable. This is also a great project because it will be finishing up an area because a couple of years ago, we did in our case in the south with CDBG block grant money to install streetlines. So this will make great connections for the residents to the north down to Cochrane Park. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Yes, Whitney, you have a question?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's not a question, but I didn't get a chance to email it in before. On number eight of the application, I don't know if you already submitted it yet, but in the answer box, there just needs to be the second sentence, third sentence, the last sentence. They're using these two figures to estimate a number of low to moderate income. Needs to be inserted there, people that will benefit. That was my only thing. Sorry to copy edit.
So what's, what's it again now?
Um, yeah, in the packet on number eight, the project beneficiaries. How many low to moderate income people will benefit from the CBBG funds requested in this application? And the answer in the last sentence, you just need to insert income after a low to moderate.
Okay.
That was it. That was.
I see. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Fresh pair of eyes.
Any questions, other questions, comments? Can I tell them? Because I can't see everybody. Bruce, turn on your mic. There you go.
Where does some money come from? Is this county money, state money, federal money?
Excellent question. This is federal money that is passed down directly to the county. So it's Community Development Block Grant money comes through Alzner and Rindavon.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? We, I can't remember a year when we didn't receive some funding from CDBG. So it is kind of a normal function that we used it in all over the city to various things. Save taxpayer millions of dollars, no doubt, in the decades we've been using them. Were there any of the comments or questions? Okay, well.
Mayor, it looks like Bob has a.
Okay.
He has his raise.
Oh, well, I muted myself and then disconnected myself, too. I was just going to make a motion, Mayor, if there's no other questions or that.
Actually, we've got to open it up for the public.
Right.
I guess, are there no other council questions?
No.
Now, I will now open up the public hearing.
Questions.
Oh, no questions, okay. As a reminder, public comments for this public hearing were accepted in advance by mail and email. Julie, would you please read any public comments that were submitted in advance in the record?
We had no public comments submitted, Mayor.
No public comments. Very good. Thank you very much.
And given that.
Wait a minute, I mean, now, close the public hearing and accept a motion for this item. Please state your name, and when you make the motion, second, then the city clerk will take the roll call vote. Go ahead.
This is Chris Hands, and since it's Ward Three, I'd sure like to make this motion. I move that the council authorize the mayor to sign the 2021 CDBG application.
And this is Bruce Caldwell. I will second that.
Very good.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
So Member Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Knapp?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye, can you hear me?
Yes. Councilmember Pape?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Debold?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, we're going to move into Finance Administration. Format for consideration of the rest of our agenda items will be as follows. The staff will make a presentation regarding the item. Then the council is asked to hold all questions until the end of the presentation. Once the presentation is over, I will ask the council for questions. We will answer questions one at a time. Please indicate you have a question by physically raising your hand. Don't forget to state your name before you begin speaking for those who might be joining us without the video working. So those are kind of the rules. Number one, consider approval of a franchise ordinance with Evergy Metro Incorporated. This is a second reading. Chris, would you provide any additional staff updates on this item?
I, I do have a, just a brief presentation just to cover this. The item in front of you is approval of an ordinance granting a franchise agreement with Evergy. The duration is 10 years. This is a renewal of an existing 5% franchise fee on gross sales. In 2019, this agreement generated $853,000. It's projected to make 925 in fees in 2020. 70% of that's generated from our commercial properties for residents that are in need. Certain loaded, moderate-income residents can apply for our franchise fee rebate program. I do want to go ahead and start this presentation, just kind of cover a couple highlights from things I've heard in the last couple days that hopefully address some of those things. So Meredith, if you'll throw that presentation up. Just a couple of quick slides I wanted to share with everybody. Not much of, outside of what's included in the agenda form, but franchise fees. So the state KSA 1220, 2001, and subsequent authorized the cities to charge franchise fees for granting utilities the privilege of using public property for private profit. That is essentially, I think, what we need to focus on is that this is, if we divide our, the thinking of who pays this, this is a fee that Evergy customers play, pay, not our residents. So Evergy is using public property for private profit. Again, so they are paying for that. So this is essentially a rent payment, similar to a room rental. Franchise fees can't exceed 20 years by state statute. We have in Merriam used 10 years as the duration of them, and there is no set rate. They just must be reasonable. 5%, we believe would be reasonable because every other city for decades have used 5% as the standard for franchise fees, especially electric franchise fees. The 5% franchise fee in Merriam predates the incorporation of our city in 1950. Original electricity franchise was between KC PNL and the Community Association of Merriam. That was the governmental entity that took care of Merriam prior to the incorporation of the city. Next slide, please. In a little bit of research, research, I actually pulled these out of the minutes. The special meeting of the City Council of Merriam was called to order at 8:00 PM on November 27, 1950. The city was incorporated in 1950. So we would consider these minutes to really be founding documents of how this city was structured to be run. This is an excerpt. Power and Light Company would enter into a franchise agreement with the city of Merriam. So what this is addressing is the question of how they would transition the franchise fee from where it was with the association to the city now that the city existed. So Power and Light would enter into a franchise agreement with the city of Merriam, whereby the Power and Light Company would maintain and install the city's lighting system. I think it's important that we point that out because that's what we're doing. At the time of establishment of the city, we didn't have a public works department. So what we did is we used the franchise fee to pay Power and Light to maintain and install the city's lighting system. We do that now, so the 5% resides with us. However, the amount of light installed would be in comparison to the amount of funds available to be used for the purpose in the street lighting fund setup. The amount in this fund is to be made up of 5% of gross revenue of the city. So as we can see, effective 1950, prior to 1950, there was a 5% franchise fee on electricity in Merriam for Merriam residents or whatever, whatever we considered ourselves before we were incorporated in 1950. So again, in the founding documents here, we can see that franchise fees have been around for 70 years. They get renewed every 10 years. And I will tell you that in my research of these, apparently, every 10 years, they, there is, there is debate about continuing them. But thus far, for the past 70 years, every 10 years, we have renewed them. Next slide, please. So just in context of our revenues, general fund revenues for 2020, for the general fund, which is the fund that we maintain the city out of, we are projecting fund revenues. Clearly, this would be a little different as relative to COVID, but this is from the budget, $18.5 million in fund revenues. Franchise fees, as you can see on the left, are seven. It's actually about 7.7. We could round up to 8% of the general fund. It's $1.4 million. Franchise fees are projected to bring in 70% of which come in from our commercial properties, 30% of which come in from our residential. Next slide. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is, this has been posted in the legal record on April 21st, which is 20 days ago. That is per state statute. So we are within our legal right to approve, alter, deny this franchise agreement up to the council's consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Whitney?
I have a few questions, but do you want to go like one question per person? Or let me just shoot them out? They're mostly like yes, no.
I would say, go ahead, question, answer the question because another question may be looming out there that you answer, so we might.
Okay, cool. So, Christie, you'd said previously that 70% of this revenue comes from businesses. That's still accurate? Yes?
Yes, I mean, it's, yes, approximate.
Approximate. We'll speak in approximate.
69, 70%.
Right, I'm interested in rounding up to the five or something like that. So I don't know if a lot of people know this, but Advent Health, the city's largest employer and a significant consumer of electricity, they don't pay property taxes. Are they exempt from the franchise agreement as well?
They are not. Similar to churches, churches don't pay, but yes, Evergy pay, I'm sorry. Advent pays the Evergy franchise fee, yes.
Fee, okay, great. So when we say a franchise fee allows us to maintain the right-of-way, some feedback that I've heard from residents is that, like, I still have to mow the grass and I shovel the snow on the public rights-of-way. What are like two to three examples that the city would consider a maintenance activity in the right-of-way versus what a resident?
Well, there's, there's a lot of right-of-way that does not exist behind the curb in front of people's front yard. I mean, almost, the majority of right-of-way is not in probably people's front yard. So anytime you see a city employee cutting grass, that is right-of-way. So some of the things other than just cutting grass that need to occur is there sidewalks? The sidewalks fall in the right-of-way. You know, usually, right-of-way extends about 10 foot behind the curb, 10 to 12 foot behind the curb. So while that is residential, viewed as residential property and residential maintenance, that is the right-of-way. So sidewalks fall within there. Any type of retaining walls that are in there, curbs. So for example, we charge a franchise fee to trash haulers. Trash haulers, well, they don't dig into the right-of-way. They drive down the right-of-way, which is the ribbon of the street. They destroy our curbs. Those curbs need to be replaced. So that is right-of-way work that the city has to fund to repair. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and, and that applies to above the ground, below the ground, and the surface.
Above the ground, below the, yes, ma'am.
All right. Then the agreement establishes that Evergy has to repair any disruption or damage to any Evergy-exclusive projects at no cost to the city. And it requires them to trim or remove any vegetation interfering with their scope of work or that's preventing any safety issues. So without a franchise fee agreement, is it possible that the costs that Evergy incurs to do those things and somehow some form could fall on the city or the residents?
If we did not, if I understand your question correctly, if we did not have an agreement with Evergy, then it is possible that the city would have to restore those things. It is the agreement that essentially tells Evergy they will restore the right-of-way. So if they do work in the right-of-way, if they have to get a permit, but we also ask them to restore any damage because you're talking about gas pipelines that could potentially explode, what more, more relevant, water. You know, when we have water breaks, say on 67th between the railroad tracks and I-35 on a regular basis or on 67th towards Antioch, that's damage to a right-of-way done by a private utility. They need to repair that. That is not the city's responsibility to repair that. That is a result of the franchise fee, the franchise agreement stating that they need to restore that property.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
It does, yes. And for my follow-up question, they, so you did mention they're required to purchase permits, licenses, all of that on a per-project basis. In addition to, they also provide us a planned schedule of work. So is it safe to assume that without a franchise agreement, in addition to what we just answered, that there would be an expense of just more man-hours spent coordinating all of these projects with the utility without the basic franchise fee guidelines in place, franchise agreement guidelines in place?
If I understand your question, yes, it's quite possible. But I'm not sure, it would really be a case-by-case basis depending on what they wanted to do. But yeah, needless to say, if they didn't have a plan that was spelled out and we had to hunt them down, there would be some staff time that would, that would be spent doing that.
Okay, great. So residents have expressed a concern that people are, that the city is double-dipping by levying property taxes and collecting franchise fee, franchise fee via Evergy bills. Residential land in the public right-of-way is not subject to property taxes, correct? So my house.
Residential land, say, I'm sorry, I said it again, just the last sentence.
Right, so residential land that has a piece of land in the public right-of-way, that right-of-way is not subject to property taxes? Is that correct?
That, that is correct, but it's not actually residential land.
Well, it's right-of-way, yeah.
Yeah, so, so city, city right-of-way extends into residential, residential yards, but actually, the plating of the property, so for, for example, your, your house, if you look at the plat of your house, it actually stops somewhere within 10 to 12 foot of the curb because that is the public right-of-way. Now, the resident maintains that, they cut the grass, they take care of the regular maintenance of the grass. But that is, well, it feels like our residential property. It is actually city right-of-way. So the city actually owns that property and has the right to operate within it. Does that answer your question? Sorry.
Yes, it does. So the prices and rate structure that Evergy charges for electricity are approved on a state level by the Kansas Corporation Commission, which is the KCC. Does the city of Merriam have any legal authority when it comes to the pricing and rate structure approval of the tariffs that the KCC approves for Evergy?
Not that I believe, not that I'm aware of. I would maybe defer to the city attorney, but I don't think so.
So, I mean, no, we don't have any direct standing to intervene in that proceeding. We could, whenever they have those rate hearings, they always have open public comment. And so the city could, could interject and provide comment when that comes up. But that's the same right that every other citizen has.
And residents can provide comment as well if Evergy submits a new pricing or structure application.
Correct.
Which that sounds like they'll need to do in the near-ish future or have started on already based on what we talked about last meeting.
Right, they have a, they have an application pending.
Great. Should Merriam and Evergy find themselves in a disagreement over the terms of the franchise fee? Would the Evergy tariff that's approved by the KCC take precedence over any municipal ordinance?
I'm not sure. I'd have to defer to the city attorney on that.
So they really regulate different things. The franchise agreement regulates use and occupancy of our right-of-way. KCC, what they review relates to, in this case, Evergy's interactions with its customers. And so what they can charge their customers. So it's, it's really different regulatory authority. I have never seen an issue or a situation where the KCC tried to intervene in any way in a municipality's ability or right to regulate its own right-of-way.
Correct, but they do approve the application from Evergy that contains the Merriam fee 5% rate structure, correct?
Um, so we have the authority to set that rate structure. There are statutory maximums. And so beyond, you, you can set different rate structures, municipalities can. And so when a municipality sets a different rate structure, they don't have to seek and obtain KCC approval for that.
Okay. But if I'm Evergy and I know I have to resubmit or redo my pricing or my price structure and rate structure, I have to submit that application to the KCC and they say, yes, you can charge your customers this. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So they're completely separate things. So when I get my Evergy bill and I see that the fees and the charges that are on the Evergy bill, the Kansas Corporation Commission approved those line items and those rates, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, sorry. Then, um, so there was a question about this on the council email a little bit as well. But the franchise fees make up a small sum of the general fund. I think, Chris, the latest you said was 8%, somewhere in there. And the general fund is our primary source for city operations. It has multiple income sources. You can see all of those income sources if you, you're following along at home. In the 2020 budget PDF, it's, I think, page 17 of the budget, but page 21 of the PDF. Is there currently a way to track specifically where revenue from Evergy lands in the general fund and what expenses it goes toward?
I, there, I mean, there's, there's not really a way to track it. I mean, once, once it's in the general fund, it's in the general fund. It'd be like tracking if I'm paying the rent for my, my wife and I, or if she's paying the rent, it'd be, once the money's in the bank account.
The money goes in the bucket, the money.
I like to say, once the, once it's in the gumbo, it's in the gumbo, all the ingredients. I like to say, once the, once it's in the gumbo, it's in the gumbo, all the ingredients are part of it. There are mechanisms in place that if the council was interested in being able to track that, we could. But we don't currently track that. We, um, we dump it in the general fund because it's for maintaining the right of way, it's for rent of the right of way. That is the account that we maintain the right of way. That's where we actually take care and we cut the grass and we trim the trees. So that's why that goes into that account.
Cool, um, and then my last items. So in the budget and in the CAFER, we refer to franchise fees, both as franchise fees and franchise taxes. And, um, I think that semantic difference, um, is important. Because in, in the agreement, uh, under section seven payments and charges. It says that the franchise fee is compensation to the city for the use of right of way and shall in no way be deemed a tax of any kind. And, and while I understand that financially those two could mean the same thing. I think that they could be confusing for residents if it says franchise taxes somewhere else and franchise fees in another spot. Is it possible to, um, make sure that? Franchise fees or revenue is called that just to help with financial transparency?
Yeah, at, we're, uh, absolutely, I will, I will look into where we've got, where we're using two terms for that. Cause yeah, we, we should have some uniformity of our, of our definitions. But yeah, we can definitely do our best to make sure those things are aligned.
Awesome, um, I just think, I did like a control F and that told me where they all were. And then I think in section 12, item I, there's a spelling error. Little Miss copywriter tonight, I think it says Patty, but it should probably be party.
Okay, yep, we, we, we will, we will look at that, we will make sure that it's not supposed to be Patty.
I mean, if Patty wants to be involved, whoever she is, ever do, by all means.
Absolutely.
Let's charge her 5%. Yeah, that ends, uh, the Whitney question hour.
Anyone else have questions? Uh, Mr. Neil. Jason, you're next. Mr. Neil, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, uh, Chris, I, in your presentation, you mentioned that the, uh, overall. Franchise fees portion is about 1.4 million. And I, I think you said the Evergy piece is about 900 something thousand. And last year it was 800 and something thousand. What is the difference in the? First of all, obviously the, the Evergy part of it is the significant piece of our franchise, uh, revenue. What, what is the difference in the amount budgeted in last year versus this year? Is that because of the rate increases at, uh, that Evergy or increased usage? Or what, what are we, where, where is the additional, uh, revenue coming from?
Sure, great question, uh, rate increases would be a part of it, but primarily it comes from the fact that we've got car dealerships online in 2020. That we did not anticipate, well, that we're not on, online in 20, in 19. So we've got the Audi dealership that we're going to have a full year of. We anticipate that we're going to have something north of Hyundai that'll be online in 20 and will be producing, uh, electricity at that site. So, uh, we, we anticipate the increase being primarily in just new tenants and new users of electricity.
Okay, and then, um, my, uh, additional question has to do with, with the structure of, you know, franchise agreements. Since essentially the franchise agreement. governs a whole bunch of terms, uh. But essentially they're collecting the fee for us, which is a percentage, it's defined as a percentage. Is, is that, is, is that in any way severable to where you could, the city has the flexibility to adjust that at some point? Before the end of the term of the, uh, agreement? Should there be a, 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 a reason to do that?
No, I'm not sure the answer to that, I mean, we can choose. I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, if we can change it in the middle of the term. I suppose we could probably change it downward in the middle of the term and no one would complain. I don't know if we could bring, we could increase that amount. I'd have to go and look in the agreement unless the city attorney happens to be, be looking at that part right now. Or if someone else happens to have read that, I mean, I'm happy to look real quick, I just don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, so, um. You know, we, we couldn't charge a higher percentage than what we're charging. As Chris mentioned, I think most, uh. The vast majority of municipalities charge 5% on gross revenues. It's, I've, every franchise agreement I've ever seen or done or worked on has charged a flat level fee. For the entirety of the term of the franchise agreement. Anything can be negotiated, 5% is the max, um, you can, you can charge less. You could leave it open to, um, you can negotiate anything you want within the statutory constraints on that percentage. But, but in my experience, I've never seen that done. I, one, one thing I would add to maybe Chris's description of franchise fees is. You know, the reason why Evergy or Southwestern Bell or Time Warner. Why they're even in our right of way is because they have a statutory right to be in our right of way. And if you think about that, they don't pay for any of that right of way upfront. The city pays 100% of the cost of the acquisition of that right of way. And basically if, you know, like on Takings cases, um, that I've worked on. The cost of a city acquiring right of way is, you know, not a total taking of all value of the land. Cause there's some residual value that it could in someday revert back to the adjoining property owner, but it's pretty darn close. Um, and so you've got all these private entities that have a statutory right to be in our right of way. And they're not paying us any rent, even though we paid all of the cost of acquiring that right of way. Now, if you think of it as if you were a private property owner and Evergy wanted to pull uneasement across the middle of your, your property. They don't have a statutory right to do that and I'm pretty sure you'd want compensation for that. This is the only way that municipalities can recover any compensation. For the money that they've put forward on the front end. To acquire that right of way that these private service providers didn't pay a dime for. So, you know, there, there is some, um, what I would almost call annuitized. Acquisition cost that, that this, that this kind of recognizes in addition to. The, the maintenance obligations of maintaining your right of way.
And I, go ahead.
I don't know if I'm still, am I, am I muted, can you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, um, yeah, my, uh, okay, so, so the reason I asked that question, I mean, obviously I. I'm just trying to find out sort of what the parameters of our, you know, flexibility built into this might be. Not that I'm trying to indicate that it's a bad idea, uh, but, um. One of the concerns that's been raised in this discussion is that. You know, Evergy seems to be able to increase their rates fairly easily and has been doing so. I don't know exactly how, how much there is to that, but, um, but if that's in fact the case. And we, we basically have a percentage, we get, you know, our revenue. Essentially increases right along with, with Evergy's, um, revenue. So if for some reason Evergy is able to, over the next 10 years. Significantly get their, their rates increased. Is there any flexibility built in for us to then back off to a, maybe a slightly lower percentage? And so we end up giving, uh, a, the same amount of revenue or, or, or not increasing the revenue as much. That's really was, was the point of my question.
I, I, I think, and, and I'll, while I speak for a second, I'll let the city attorney look into this. But in section 12, um, um, subtopic B, it says, upon written request of either the city or grantee, the franchise. He shall, franchise shall be reopened and renegotiated at any time upon any of the following events. An I, it says, change in federal, state or local law regularly, regulation or order that material affects any rights or obligations of either party. Including but not limited to the scope of the grant to grantee or the compensation received by the city. So I don't know if that's, that might say that if we wanted to alter the compensation, perhaps that would be a term to reopen, I don't know. But that's just as I was kind of going through something that looked like it might address that situation. I don't know if Ryan can weigh in on that.
Yeah, um, you know, I'm trying to think if, if there's been a situation where I've had anybody re, reopen a franchise agreement. And I can't think of one.
I'm not familiar with it, but that doesn't mean it hasn't occurred.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think as a practical matter, if we came back later and came back, I mean, you can always amend an agreement. You know, short of it, it's final term. So if, if we got to a point where we thought that we were being justly compensated. And we wanted to charge of a smaller percentage of gross revenues. I mean, that's not going to be a problem. Evergy isn't going to care about passing on less. Less of the cost of the franchise fee to, to their customers. The, the way these negotiations go generally is they, we just tell them the percentage within the statutory maximum cap. That, that our city charges, the only constraint, there are two constraints on that. The statutory maximum of 5% and the, um, restriction that we have to. Not be discriminatory in our franchise fees that we charge to, to franchisees. So one thing you have to keep in mind is if we reduce Evergy's percentage. Then every other franchisee is going to be beating on our door saying, if you don't reduce our percentage as well. You're, you're violating the statute.
If, if I could add to that, Ryan, I think here's, here's another perfect example that I think does a good job of separating the fact that I know that we have residents that are concerned. And we have residents that are concerned primarily because those residents are customers. But I'll give an example, um, Southern Star, uh, pipeline runs through our community. They eat up our right of way. They do, they trans, they, they are providing a service that, uh, has a point of origin outside of our community. And has a point of delivery to the customer outside of our community. However, it runs right through the middle of our community, it runs just outside of Idlevice. They, uh, frequently, uh, are disturbed by, uh, work that is done on the right of way out there over that pipeline. The fact that they don't have customers in our community, um, I don't think is material on if we should charge them for the usage of that. And as Ryan just said, if we were to say, hey, we don't want Evergy to, uh, pay 5% franchise, we want it to be three, or we don't want a franchise. We would literally be allowing other utilities that we don't have customers in our community to use our right of way for free. Uh, again, I've used the example of this as a room rental, we charge commercial rates. We've already established that in, in Merriam for city, uh, publicly owned assets, so rooms in the community center. If you're going to come and you're going to provide a service where you make money, you want to sell Mary Kay. You want to do something where you are going to, uh, uh, gather a private profit in public, uh, using public space. We charge you a different fee. That is overhead that a normal business would be paying. You should not be getting subsidized by the government by not having to pay for that. The taxpayers should not be on the hook for providing those, um, uh, eliminating those. Uh, supply chain type of expenditures that every other business should have to use. So, so I think that it's important to look at that as an example. A second example we might want to look at is that by charging a fee versus charging this as a tax. Because clearly for 70 years, this has been a revenue source. Uh, if we wanted to do away with a franchise fee, that does not make 1.4 million dollars magically appear. That has to come from somewhere where there has to be a cut in services or some combination of two. But the reason that franchise fees are granted and make a little bit more sense than property taxes for the maintenance of the right of way when it comes to franchisees. Is if you look at somewhere like Timber Ridge, anybody that's familiar with Timber Ridge, they don't have gas. They were built without gas, so they do not pay a franchise fee. So therefore they are not paying for the right that Kansas Gas has received from the city to provide that service to customers within the city. Which makes sense, I think that makes perfect sense, they don't actually use that service, they should not have to pay for it. So just, uh, just two anecdotal type of, uh, examples there of where franchise fees versus taxes. The, those examples might help the council better get their head around, better get their, their head around the, the concept of franchise fees. I'm happy to answer any other question.
Mr. Silver, thank you. I'm sorry, did, did you have any further questions, Mr. Neil?
Well, I was, I was just, um. I was just trying to, trying to, to say that I think, I think one of the things that's hard for, for people to understand. Is that the, in this case, the customer, it's, it's just a pass through. So they perceive it as, as if it's a tax or a fee that they're paying, which they are paying essentially. For the use of electricity and, and it's pretty widespread. That being said, I still think we need to have a franchise fee. So that's, that's, my, my point is, is, is how we, how we address or whether we can address the issues. If, like I said, and you've answered the question, going forward, the, you know, the. KCC allows a, a, an exorbitant rate increase and, and we've decided that we, we actually don't need all that to. And we can, we could reduce it at that point. It sounds like we can do that possibly if we choose to do so.
Okay, Mr. Silver, did you have a question?
Yes, this is Jason Silvers. First of all, um, I just wanted to point out, I'm sure it was just, uh, an oversight, but because this is being recorded and it's public record. At the very beginning, when, uh, Mayor was. Explaining the process for this, he did call this a franchise tax. Um, and we have established that it's not a tax, so I just wanted to, um, give anyone the opportunity to reiterate that it's not a tax.
Good point.
Okay, um, my second question is, uh, I've been in communication with, uh. Mr. Engel over the past couple of days and, um, I am aware that businesses do pay a different rate than residents. Um, on this franchise fee. What is the rate that they pay and are they able to negotiate that with? The public utilities or is that controlled by the KCC?
Uh, as far as I am aware, I, I think they pay the same rate, I think. I'm looking to the city attorney. I'm pretty sure everybody pays 5% on.
Right.
Uh, now there's different assessment values on property tax, but I think on utility, uh, franchise fees. It's a 5% of gross sales because we just get, they say we sold this much energy. So they may have a different energy rate, I don't know, but, but the way that, the, the way that 5% of gross sales is, is. Ever, Evergy says we sold X amount of electricity, meaning we made this much in gross sales, times 0.05. That's what we owe in franchise fee, so, so the franchise fee is off of gross sales. I don't know if electricity is negotiated with the end user at a different value, that's just, that's, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I stand corrected, I misunderstood what you had said, so thank you.
Yeah, I apologize if I made that not clear.
Uh, I just probably misunderstood it, thank you.
Any other questions?
It looks like Bob has a question.
Bob? Mr. Pink, go ahead.
I always, I went to unmute myself. I go to unmute myself and then I turn myself off. Yeah, my question, uh, is that it appears since 1950, we've been charging 5% at least then. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Engel talked about, um, negotiations or about discussions throughout that time, but we've always had this franchise fee. but we've always had this franchise fee. Um, has, has it ever changed from 5%? Uh, we've always had one, but has it been 5% for all these years entirely? Um, is my first question.
Yes, it has been 5% since prior to the incorporation of the city. Well, in full disclosure, I did not look, I did not see the agreement that covered from 59 to 69, but I saw the agreement in 69, 79, 89, 99, oh nine, and then this one is the 19, 19 agreement, carried over to 20.
Okay. And then my next question is that it typically has been renewed and on 10-year increment. Um, you know, in light of some of the questions, concerns, and, uh, I agree that we, we need to continue the, you know, the franchise fee, but, uh, considering it, you know, at this point with not knowing what our revenue sources are gonna be coming in. But, uh, my, my question would be, would anything prohibit us from changing the term from a 10-year, maybe down to five years, where we could reevaluate and reassess this at an earlier time than waiting out 10 years in order, you know, to collect the fee for 10 years? Maybe at five years, we could take a look at it, if for some reason everything's, you know, rebounded and we're doing well financially in the city, maybe we could offer some relief, uh, by reducing the amount at that point, uh, at an earlier date than 10 years out.
I, I believe that by statute, there is just a maximum term of 20. I think probably anything less than that is legally acceptable. I'm gonna look to the city attorney to this, so it is possible we could pick a shorter term. I think the only thing that spelled out statute is there is a maximum term of 20.
Uh, Chris is right.
Okay, yeah, and that's, so that, that's something, I guess, you know, as we talk about this and, and establishing what we're doing, so we might throw that there for at least thinking about or consideration. Uh, the other thing I want to make sure that the public knows about, because hopefully some are weighing in on this or watching as well, is we've had in past discussions, uh, talked about that we have a rebate program that's available to the, uh, people that might be, um, under certain income guidelines itself, that they can actually apply to have that money redistributed back to them, uh, if they, if they prove their income and, um, that they, they can actually have that rebated back to them so that they don't have to pay that fee. Uh, I guess I don't know much that everybody's aware of that. I do think that's something that we might, especially this time, uh, with what we're experiencing, we might want to get that word out and advertise that more to our community, that if you do have some sort of situation where you're having difficulties and, uh, you know, you've been laid off and don't have, you know, income coming in, that this, this program does exist. And, uh, I, I think you had indicated in my asking earlier, uh, that there were like 199 people have taken advantage of that program or something in the past.
Uh, yes, sir, there, there is a franchise fee rebate program, and, uh, over the, the last three years, we have, uh, almost 200, 199 applicants giving back about $9,500 in franchise fees, which actually, well, that doesn't sound like a lot. I mean, the thing to keep in mind is that the, the franchise, the monthly franchise fee on the average home, uh, uh, on the average Evergy bill is somewhere between $2 and $3 a month. So that's actually point, but my point being is that $9,500 is, that's quite a bit of franchise fee refund to get up to that amount when the franchise fee is somewhere in the neighborhood of $3. So yeah, that is a program that, that we push every year in the highlights. Uh, we, we, uh, when we open that opportunity, which I believe is in February or March, the clerk, clerk might know that, uh, those dates better, and I'm getting a nod that that's about when it comes out. Uh, we, we can do a better job of pushing that out, making sure that it's, that, that more people are aware of it.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
That's all I have, man.
Uh, before we go back to Mr. Neal, let me see if someone else has it. Anyone who wants to ask a question hasn't yet. Anybody? Mr. Neal, do you have a comment?
Well, I had another, another question to follow up on that. Um, is, is that information available on the city website, number one? And number two, what are roughly the guidelines, um, the income guidelines? So that people can.
It is available on the city's we- website. And the guidelines are, I believe it's 80% of, give me one second here.
I have it, if someone wants me to link it in the chat.
Did you find it, Whitney? There it is.
He found what I found.
So there, there's your, similar to, that these are HUD guidelines, so we're very familiar with these. We just had a public hearing on our CDBG grant, which follows these same HUD guidelines. Those are the income guidelines that, uh, you'd need to adhere to, fall, fall below, at or below to qualify for the franchise fee rebate. We use the HUD guidelines, uh, simply because it's an impartial third party. Uh, I suppose that the council could, uh, choose to alter those or pick a different set of metrics to determine need. Um, I would suggest the impartial third party, uh, but the council, at their discretion, could choose to, to modify that. Did that answer your question, David, hopefully, or I think that was your question?
Yeah, I think that, I think that's absolutely important. I, from, you know, it looks to me like for people who are, you know, who, who are in need, that there is a, a mechanism available that probably just, um, needs to be better understood uh, by the public, and maybe, maybe though, that would be, uh, uh, something that we can do a better, a little bit better job of, of, of letting people know about. But, uh, yeah, so that was, that was primarily what I was wanting to ask. Do you, are we gonna have a, a, a comment section? Because I, I do have a couple of comments that I would like to make, but, um, so I don't know when, if, if that's appropriate or if it's time to.
Okay, well, the way, the way we set up, uh, we have questions and comments by council, and then we all, then we will, uh, read the public comments that were provided by citizens, uh, and then we'll move forward. So now would be the time, if you have any comments, now would be the time to bring them up.
Okay, um, obviously, right now, we are looking at a tremendous amount of uncertainty in our revenue side, because our economy is essentially shut down, uh, or at least substantially reduced, and such a large portion of our revenue, uh, is dependent on the economic activity and the sales tax revenue. Um, as it stands right now, the federal, uh, the, the federal action to reimburse local government is, does not cover the, uh, lost revenue portion. And in the next couple of weeks, there's, that is a, 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 a point of significant discussion in the next round of, of federal funding, possibly. Uh, it's something that we need to, and I've been working on very hard for the last month at least, if not, and maybe more than a month, month and a half, month and a half. Um, and it, it, it seems to me that, uh, uh, we, to, for us to, right now, voluntarily, um, earn back a source of, of revenue that's largely paid by commercial, uh, uh, entities and which is, uh, which we have a mechanism for lower-income folks to be rebated for. Maybe we should open that up, you know, the time, the timeframes, they don't have to wait till next year, I don't know if that's possible, uh, you know, uh, uh, an additional, uh, enrollment period or something. But the, it would seem that we hurt our case for the receiving, you know, federal assistance, uh, not just us, but in general, by, by, by voluntarily, uh, abandoning a revenue source that has been, been in place for a long time. Once this is over, once we know something, we, we don't know even how severe the revenue curtailment is going to be, um, maybe it, it, it makes sense to look at it again. But right now, I think that responsibly, we, we'd have to keep, uh, you know, we'd have to continue to, to recover the franchise fees. And, uh, that's, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments? I have a concluding comment before we begin the public comments. Anybody else want to speak? I have a question for Mr. Engel. Um, uh, this has nothing to do with this specific issue, uh, other than, uh, I guess a reminder to folks that anytime we reduce our income by hundreds of thousands of dollars for any reason whatsoever, um, as you stated, do we got fair where that money's coming from? Uh, can you give me a calculation, uh, of how many mills this represents if we were to, uh, lose this source of revenue approximately?
Somewhere in the neigh- neighborhood of nine to 11, somewhere in there, just shooting from the hip.
And we currently char, on property tax, charge around 20, is it 27 mills?
27, a little bit north of 27 and a half, yes, sir.
So when we talked about, um, 8%, it's an 8% reduction in, uh, in revenues, uh, as it relates to property taxes, which I'm absolutely not in favor of raising, and I want to go on the record of that. But if we were to raise property taxes to make the difference for the cost of this, of this, it could be nine to 11 mills per, uh, resident and per business owner. So, uh, this is not an insignificant amount of money. This, uh, this is something that we budget for, it's something we've received since the 1950s. The money doesn't, isn't, it goes to pay for the, the, uh, uh, the keep and, uh, operation of our city, just like all of our revenue does. So that's one thing. And the other comment about, uh, making this five years versus 10 years, I believe it was stated that at any time that we decide that we want to lower this mill levy, we can, we can take that action, we don't have to have, uh, any specific year. I think one of the benefits of going 10 years versus five years is that we don't have to go through this whole process again, that we can wait 10 years before we go through it again. I was here the last time we did it, but that doesn't stop us from changing it anytime we want, so long as Evergy cooperates. So I think there's some expediency to, and efficiencies to keep it at 10 years just for that reason alone, but, you know, five years from now, if we decide, hey, you know what? We're making so much money, we don't want to do with it. I can't imagine that happening, or if Evergy raises their rates, you know, and we think that that's too much to charge your citizens, we can bring it back. But the third and final, uh, comment was something that was brought up that I had forgotten about, because this actually came up when we started tinkering around with another franchise fee, not a tax, but a fee. And that was if we change it for this person, and I think it had to do with cable, the cable versus something other, uh, uh, something similar to cable, but something slightly separate, that if we go to make a negotiation and charge them a different rate, and we simply basically open it up for all of our franchisees to say, hey, I understand you changed it, now they're only paying 3%, so I'm gonna apply to pay 3% too. So the money we would lose from Evergy, we would lose from every other franchisee we have. And that changes the scheme of how much money this costs us. So it's one of those things that I had forgotten, that's something that many council people maybe didn't know, this isn't a simple agreement, this is a complex process. That's why we engage attorneys to write contracts and make, and give us advice and so on. Anyway, that's all I have. Uh, we have no further comments, I'm gonna go ahead and, yes, Mr. Engel?
Mayor, it's, it's about nine and a quarter, so it was between nine and 11, but it's about nine and a quarter based on math from the budget.
Right, and there was no talk of, of encumbering our citizens to pay for this loss. I'm just saying that, that if, if a citizen wants to know how much this would cost them in their personal property, in their property taxes increased to make this difference, that's what it would cost. There's, there's a number of ways we would have to respond to this, obviously. I mean, we're already looking for ways to respond for our lack of, of revenue because of this horrid virus that we're dealing with, uh, and it comes from all across the spectrum. And I think the city's done a wonderful job of, of trying to identify sources of where the money can be saved at. And, and, and in the process, yes, uh, our citizens, uh, service to our citizens will suffer to a certain degree, uh, projects will be delayed, things will be less than, than ideal as they are now. So we will share in that sacrifice, but I think Mr., uh, Mr. Neal's comments, uh, are well-placed. This may not be the time to, to give away funding that we may be desperate to need to keep our operation running, so. I'm gonna go ahead, if, uh, Ms. Yadrich, did you have something further?
Just one comment, well, a group of comments. Um, I want to thank, uh, our neighbors and residents who submitted public comment for this. Um, I think on our level of government, a significant chunk of, um, our time and the votes we make are about what I used, always said was keeping the lights on, but this time it's literally about that. Um, and I, I love that, I, you know, a handful of residents questioned, um, the agreement and what it was about, because it forces us all to learn and to reconsider if we're really approaching fulfilling the city's basic needs in the, in the best way with the tools that we have available to us. Um, and I did see it mentioned a lot online that, um, the agreement was insensitive to residents affected by COVID. Um, and Mayor, you said that really well, it's that, you know, it's uncertain for all of us right now, um, how COVID's gonna affect the city. Um, but also, I think it's fair to say that, um, the council itself has not been personally in, or has also been personally impacted by COVID. Um, I know just in my experience, this is my, I have been keeping track, 35th day of furlough, um, and, uh, finding ways to fill your time without, you know, spending or, um, just laying on the couch all day has gotten me back into running, or avoided it. Um, but, you know, I wake up every morning and I'm worried about the unemployment site loading, and I'm worried about, um, you know, my friend who thankfully has now survived COVID in New York. Um, I'm worried about my mom walking into Advent Health every day and hoping she has enough PPE to get her through her shift. Um, so I take those things very seriously, and, um, they are very important to me and my husband right now, and to all my neighbors and to the council. Um, so I, uh, I looked back and did total up that I paid Evergy about 10 cents a day last year, um, and I did take that $36 the end of the year into account, um, when coming up with my questions and, um, when I'm listening to you guys. So thank you for keeping us on our toes.
Very good. Bob, Mr. Pay?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to make the comment that, because I had heard from at least one individual, uh, that this is not gonna, people, if we renew this, it's not gonna see an increase of 5% on top of the bill. I mean, that's, it's gonna strictly be the same amount they're currently paying, and it won't be increasing an additional 5%. So I just wanted to throw it out there that, so that people had that understanding that this isn't an increase on their bill.
Yeah.
That, that, I've done that, thank you.
All right, we have, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close with that, I think we had, we've had a good discussion, a lot of good inputs and questions, uh, and I'm gonna turn it over to our city clerk to, uh, read, uh, some public comments that have to do with this issue specifically. So go right ahead, Julian.
Okay. All right, we have quite a few, so we'll get through these here. First one is from Marilyn Stevenson, 10125 Idlevice Circle. Says, Merriam Energy Tax, vote no. Second is from Susan Anstein at 5336 Farley Street. To whom it may concern, I do not want to continue paying this fee. And we have Fred Sweeney, uh, lives at 9716 Hawker Drive. Says, hi, Merriam receives a ton of tax it receives on rising real estate taxes, personal sales tax, and who knows what else in the complex fees added to all our tax bills and utilities. Even though IKEA seems to be a big company in town, it is clear all the car dealers in Merriam are the piggy bank that contributes massive amounts to the city's coffers. Let's stop buying piles of rocks posing as art, a chime at the corner no one hears. and concentrate on helping our city remain a town with excellent public services and friendly towards those who live here. We could all use a break on money saved anywhere possible and not renewing the tax on the Evergy bill is a step in the right direction. I'm sure the city doesn't need to survive with the piles of money coming your way from just a few examples I mentioned above. City's been a Merriam resident since 1974. This one is from Kim Armstrong, 10024 West 70th Terrace. I do not want to pay this tax. We pay enough taxes. The next one is from Harry G. N. Khan III, I play, I said his name right. 10109 West 59th Terrace. I would love to see the 5% removed from our electrical bill. It is time for the residents of Merriam to see a tax relief from their elected representatives. Any actual city expenses related to electrical lines should be able to be handled under the road maintenance tax that was just extended. The city already collects sales tax on electrical bills, and they do not need the extra 5% franchise fee. Please let Merriam residents keep more of their hard earned money. And then this one is from Barbara Walsh, 9975 Edelweiss Circle. I do not want the 5% Evergy tax continued. Kansas taxes are already too high. This one is from Linda Moore. She did not provide her address. It says the subject is 5% tax. I am not in favor of that tax. If the city of Merriam needs money, perhaps they they should stop spending so much on frivolous art. This one is from Roxanne Jarboe, 10017 West 68th Street. She has lived in Merriam since 1994. I recently retired, and since my income is going to be significantly reduced, I would like to not have to continue paying the 5% tax on my electric bill. I would rather have that money to use for necessities. This one is from Albert and Ruth Terones. Regarding the 5% tax on our electric bills, I do not think this tax is needed for the citizens of Merriam, and it should not be renewed. We are already paying too much in taxes as it is. Anything that can be done to reduce our tax bill is needed. The city needs to consider the residents and those of us who are on fixed incomes. The next one is from Shay Scharf, 8501 West 61st Street. I am extremely against continuing the 5% franchise fee on the electric bill for yet another 10 years. Our electric bills are already high with many of our families out of work for COVID-19. No one wants to beg for relief, not to mention the cost of paying someone for administrating that process. We need to consider the need for new sidewalks, street lamps, and vehicles in a time when some of us are having to decide if we can reopen our business. Others don't know if they have jobs to go back to, and healthcare is already stretching us to our limits. I ask that you please pass this on at the meeting tonight, May 11, 2020. I will be tuned in to see the result of the vote. The next one is from Jeremiah Enna, E-N-N-A, hopefully that's right. Please record my opinion that we should completely eliminate the 5% tax on our electric bill called a franchise fee. I'm a 22-year resident of Merriam at 8501 West 64th Terrace. This one is from Carol Leighton at 6334 Robin Hood Lane. I am opposed to the continuation of the 5% utility tax as it adversely affects those on the lowest income. This is from Ed Ruff, 8509 West 56th Terrace. Says, no, do not continue tax to Evergy. And then this one is from Mark Laimandola. He does not provide an address. Says, when considering whether to approve the 5% use tax, please consider the following. The city put us in a very bad position by going deep into debt for unnecessary and overbuilt replacement community center. The retail sales tax taxes were never going to be enough to pay for this project. But now with car sales collapsing permanently and worldwide, plus the effects of CV-19, we will require a massive tax hike on residents to service our debt. State and federal governments have already said they are not going to bail out cities that spent unwisely. And by any measure, that regretful community center fiasco was unwise. Now, with so many people out of work, it is doubtful these will cover the cost of operations and maintenance, further compounding the financial stress. Taxing us another 5% when we are certainly going to see a tax hike to pay for the recklessness that resulted in this huge, huge financial debt, we cannot possibly service in any other way is unpalatable. The sooner the city makes the inevitable staff cuts, the better. We don't need an assistant city administrator, for an example. Stop paying that wage ASAP. And we are much less in the hole. Consider shutting off the light, the streetlights to save even more money. Those were not here when I moved here, and I totally hate them for several reasons. One of which is their severely negative impact on nocturnal wildlife. Stop the flower watering trucks and other stupid wastes of money now. What other waste does the city engage in? Make a list and insist it stops. Don't forget, you live here too. Your own standard of living will be affected by what you do or fail to do in the next month. It's going to get bad, but how bad it gets depends on how soon you make the choices that must be made. Let's not try to put a spin on the bad decisions that got us here. Let's admit a huge fail and figure out how to minimize the damage. I just told you how to get off to a good start on that. Please get started. And one more, the last one. This is from Billy Crone, 6633 Wed Street. Simpler is better. It's transparent. It's fair. That is the basis of my argument tonight against the franchise fees. I will also note that from the beginning that a franchise fee is but one of many pieces of the franchise agreement before you the CB. There are indeed multiple other fees paid by utilities to the city on a regular basis, in addition to that flat percentage franchise fee. The agreement does not depend on a franchise fee being set, and everything permitted and required by the agreement can remain in the absence of the franchise fee. Franchise fee does not pay for damages and repairs to right of way or for closures of streets. Those have always been charged separately in our agreements when they actually occur. I am not writing in opposition to the agreement as a whole. I would ask you to approve the agreement tonight with the franchise fee removed and to remove the franchise free fee from other franchise agreements in the future. Evergy defines franchise fees as rent paid for use of the right of way land, and our staff has said the same. I think most Merriam residents paying rent today pay that rent to the owner of the thing. They are renting. They are renting. Yet much of the right of way land that Evergy lines use is owned privately by the residents and businesses that already pay property and sales tax to the city. Right of way land is usually not owned by the city itself. The city doesn't mow it or shovel it or pay property tax on it. So why should the city collect rent for it? While franchise fees have been the standard for some time in this part of the country, and it is not a unique issue, is not an issue unique to Merriam, franchise fees are not universal. Three states in the US even forbid them. Franchise fees on essential utilities are a duplication of property tax. They come from the same pool of taxpayers and go into the same general fund. And they fly under the radar when people try to understand how much tax they're actually paying because franchise fees play a word game with the word tax. It's the Kansas Communication, the Kansas Corporation Commission, KCC, in no way requires franchise fees to be a part of the franchise agreement. If franchise fee is not charged, Evergy cannot simply keep the money themselves as it was said a month ago. If a franchise fee is charged, however, KCC does require that the fee get passed transparently onto customers. And customers are property taxpayers in this case. So in my mind, that changes it from a fee levied against Evergy to a fee levied against residents and local businesses. And that sounds like a tax to me. Evergy cannot legally collect taxes. Today is May 11, 2020. Our nation is weathering a crisis on a scale that none of us have ever seen before. Now is simply not an appropriate time to be taxing residents and local businesses whom have already suffered greatly due to the recent events. Franchise fees are essentially micro taxes nickel and time people in hard to track ways. And they're the reason that when you go to sign up for a service advertised at $30 a month, it is always more, isn't it? Franchise fees cause mistrust of government that already has a clear and common publicly approved taxing capability that is property and sales tax that are just more honest, better understood, transparent, and efficient. Franchise fees are not a problem unique to Merriam, but that doesn't mean we have to perpetuate them. You have the opportunity tonight to lead our region in better government as we have before. Set ourselves apart and make a name for Merriam being no nonsense on taxes. This aligns with the council objective of providing support to existing businesses. And it provides support to existing Merriam families, which while not currently stated a council objective, I'm sure is something you all value. In closing, we should collect the money we need from our citizens and businesses to maintain government. I support taxation in general, but we should use property and sales tax and leave the franchise tax or fee, as some call it, out of it. And you can do this tonight by moving to accept the agreement before you without the 5% fee. Says, thank you for listening and for your leadership in this matter. And that was the last comment.
Other questions? I will accept a motion for this item. Ms. Hands.
Yes. I move that the council authorized the mayor to I move that the council approve a franchise ordinance with Evergy Metro Incorporated as presented.
Who's up second?
This is Scott Debold. I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
The member called on. Councilmember Naft.
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Before I submit my vote, I just wanted to say that I do, I've done some research on this. And I do understand that it's a transfer of a fee to residents. But I also understand that I have control over the 5% that's being charged to me. So after learning about this, I am going to be switching to LED lights. I'm going to be turning off lights and TVs in rooms that I'm not in. And I'm going to be unplugging appliances that I don't use on a regular basis so I can control what my electric bill is better than I have in the past. And so I am voting aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Hopefully I said aye.
I have your vote. Aye. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, I think Councilmember Neal is, we can't hear you, David.
Okay, yeah, I actually didn't, didn't actually vote, didn't say anything because I wasn't unmuted at the time. But I did want to vote aye, but I wanted to explain that my reasoning is strictly that it does not make sense right now to change what is already a, an existing fee at this moment of uncertainty. We, we, we just fiscally have to, have to see where we stand. And so I'm voting aye on that basis. I recognize that there are some concerns that, that have been raised that that require that we should look at in the, in the future. But right now, this is not the really, not the time. We have a mechanism for, for residents to seek relief, and it sounds like many of the residents who made comments might qualify for the city relief on this. And I would encourage them strongly to look at that. And I don't know whether there's a possibility of coming back and possibly changing the changing the dates on, on opening that program up, but that's something that I will ask about later. Thank you.
Okay, well, the ayes have it. Motion passes. Next item is consider approval of an ordinance authorizing sale, consumption, and possession of alcoholic liquor during Merriam Drive Live special events. Anna, are you out there somewhere?
Yes, she's coming in right now. Anna, it looks like you're a panelist.
Please, let's see, where am I at here? Please, can you fill us in on what we're doing here?
Yep. Evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you this evening is the second reading of an ordinance approving the sale, consumption, and possession of alcoholic liquor during Merriam Drive Live. This event debuted in 2008 in downtown Merriam as a new special event. The goal is to provide an opportunity to build community with our residents. Unfortunately, the last several years, we have not had ideal weather, but in order for us to serve alcohol, we have to go through the process of this authorizing this ordinance. The alcohol zone would be from the west side of the farmer's market to the east side of the Irene B. French Community Center, and this would allow event patrons to walk between the two structures and have alcoholic beverages during the event, which is currently scheduled for Saturday, October 3, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Also, as part of this event, this year, we've rescheduled the Turkey Creek Festival 5K to be the Merriam Drive Live 5K since we unfortunately had to cancel Turkey Creek Festival due to the events that are occurring today in our society. This would allow beer and wine only to be sold during the event, and it would be sold by a caterer that would be responsible for monitoring consumption. So we are looking at having a variety of musical performances, a few children's activities, and last year we introduced a corn rule tournament. And our goal is to continue the corn rule and tournament and see if we can expand that event as well as part of this.
Very good.
There's any questions?
Any questions by the City Council? Hearing, seeing none, hearing none. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion in a second for a second read. Yeah, Mr. Debold.
Yes, Mayor, this is Scott Debold.
Yes, Mayor, this is Scott Debold. I move that the council approve an ordinance authorizing the sale, consumption and possession of alcoholic liquor during the Merriam Drive Live Special Event.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
Julie, you are muted. Can you say that again? You're unmuted, you're fine.
Councilmember Knaff.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Scott Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Called on.
Aye.
Very good, passes. Let's move to the next item, which is caterers license fee. Anna, would you like to update that?
Yes, thank you. Again, this action item is tied to Merriam Drive Live. And because we require a caterer to serve the alcohol and wine at Merriam Drive Live, the city has a fee that requires him to purchase a $500 license in order to serve. Since this event is specifically for the city of Merriam, we ask that we waive this fee for this event only. So it would allow for a temporary permit to be, for this fee to be waived. If this caterer does anything else within the city of Merriam, they would have to then apply for this permit and have to pay the $500 fee associated. So we're asking for City Council to waive this fee for this event so that we can have, embrace the grape, serve our alcohol at the day of the event.
Okay, well, pretty self-explanatory. Any questions on the part of the council? Don't see any hands, so I'll entertain a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the caterer's license fee for the Merriam Drive Live event.
Second.
I'll second that, and I'd like to say the motion was made by Whitney, and she didn't raise her hand.
Containing all of the alcohol-related things.
All right, motions made and seconded, Madam Clerk.
The member Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Called on.
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Very good. All right, switching gears here, we'll go to item number four, which is consider approval of amendment to the Marion Point Redevelopment Agreement. Mr. Engel, would you give us any updates on this item?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is the approval of a third amended and restated redevelopment agreement for the Marion Point Redevelopment Project with Merriam Investors LLC and Merriam Luxury Imports or MLI. The redevelopment agreement covers the Marion Point Project down at 67th and I-35. It is the home of several successful car dealerships since its inception in 2011. The latest update, so the second amended and restated redevelopment agreement came before the council in 2017 with a co-developer, which was Richard Webb, owner of Infinity of KC and Merriam Luxury Imports, MLI. And his proposal to the city was to enclose a drainage parcel that was just to the south of Infinity. If you recall what that looked like, that was a zero revenue producing drainage area for all of Marion Point. He purchased that from the developers, which is Merriam Investors, David Block, David Christie. And he also, with negotiation and permission from the City Council, purchased a remnant parcel we own down there. And we entered into a redevelopment agreement with him to cover the extraordinary cost of developing that site. And that redevelopment agreement had pledged up to $6 million in TIF, property tax increment, back to him to pay for those improvements on that site to get it pad ready. As you will recall, TIF is not for vertical construction, it is for site work. So all of the work thus far would be considered reimbursable. Just a few highlights of that agreement from 2017. The completed project will be a new automobile dealership for the sale of new automobiles by a flagship brand that currently sold in the city. I'm just reading these from the agenda sheet. The, the TIF term is not being extended and will terminate on July 28th, 2023. A city will receive an annual administrative fee of $15,000 over the life of the agreement. Merriam Investors, whose lead developer cannot assign rights, duties and obligations to the co-developer, who's Richard Webb, Merriam Luxury Imports, until the project is sufficiently pad ready. The project is 99.9% pad ready. We're just waiting on some clearances from Johnson County Water to accept that system that's been put in there. And it's my understanding that they have been out there and done the inspections. We just need the formal word from them that they have accepted that into their system. But it is pad ready for all intents and purposes. The total amount of public funds available for the Track B project are capped at $6 million. That'll be paid in two different ways. There's $4 million up to, $4 million will be available from incremental real property taxes, your traditional method of TIF reimbursement. And then there's $2 million from unallocated fund balance within the I-35 TIF District Project Fund. Those $2 million will be paid as followed. $1 million upon the day that the dealership becomes operational. And $1 million on the one, the one-year anniversary of it opening. So essentially an incentive for the co-developer to perform, if you will. And then there was a clause that was in there that is the maximum reimbursable amount, which is currently up to $6 million, will be reduced to zero if a new dealership's not operational by July 24th of 2020 or the developer fails to address any violations or the new dealership becomes operational, then closes for more than three months. To date, all those obligations have been and continue to be met by all the parties. Mr. Webb's completed millions of dollars of site work to transform that drainage area into a pad-ready site. A pad-ready revenue-producing site. However, due to some delays in his negotiating with a end user, he's not clearly going to have that building constructed by July 24th of 20. So therefore, he is seeking a request that, seeking that the council change the operational date from July 24th of 2020 to December 31st of 2021 to accommodate those additional negotiations. No other terms of that agreement would, would change, they would all remain the same. If you look at the Red Line Agreement, the Red Line Agreement calls out the differences between the Second Amendment, which is the one approved in 2017, and the, the third one, which is the draft proposed before you. That document's been prepared by Joe Serrano, who's our bond counsel with Hootec Rock, who is somewhere on the line and on our Zoom call, as well as Richard Webb. His attorneys have reviewed it, who is the co-developer. He's somewhere on the line, and it's been reviewed by the city attorney. I'm happy to answer any questions about, about this to the best of my ability. I know that it's a very large document. Again, the relevant changes just being that we are changing the date. Council has the, has the ability to deny that change if they so choose. Although staff is of the, is of the belief that Richard's put a good faith effort into transforming that site and affording him a little bit of extra time to get a dealership in there is beneficial to all of us. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Neal.
Or they are.
Mr. Neal, go ahead.
Yeah. Based on the, the fact that the agreement, the, the, essentially the end of the recovery period is not going to change, I, from my understanding. That means that a significant portion of the $4 million is probably not going to be recoverable in the timeframe that was anticipated and calculated, is that not correct?
It, it is quite possible, yes, sir. Yeah, the, the $4 million was really, was, was based upon there being a dealership open right now. Now, however, that was based on 2017 property values. If you recall, in 2018 and 2019, commercial property values increased by quite a, quite a bit. So it's quite possible that it will, it will throw more than we would anticipate. But it's likely it's not going to throw $4 million before 2023.
So essentially, if we, you know, if we don't extend the, the term for satisfying all the conditions, then, then the, well, the project gets zero, zero support. And what is the, what are the chances of essentially nothing further happening in that event? Is the, I mean, have you, have you had discussions with, with the developer, Mr. Webb, about that?
Sure, the, the, so if I understand your question correctly, by not extending the deadline, which we are not recommending that we would extend the deadline, essentially, the TIF increment is
I meant the incremental, the, the dates that are before us tonight, not the ending deadline.
Yeah, it, it, by extending the deadline tonight, essentially, all we are doing is we are, we are continuing to provide the opportunity for Mr. Webb to put in a dealership and commit TIF dollars to that dealership. Should it come online and be open for at least one year prior to, I think it's July of 2023. If we were to say no, if the council were to say they don't want to extend that effective July 24th of this year, those, he would, he would essentially just be, he would eat the cost of having developed that property of land. He would, I can't speak for him, but he's on, I'm sure he's on the line somewhere. I assume he would have to sell that property at a massive loss. But essentially, it's pad ready. So something revenue-producing, we would assume, would appear there. That answer your question?
Yeah, I think, I think what I was, the point I was trying to make was that essentially there was, if, if the deadline as written had been met, there would have been three years of recovery possible for the $4 million piece, plus the two additional incentive million-dollar packages. Now, with these new deadlines, if they go out to that, you're only going to be looking at a, a year and a half of recovery. Basically, you're cutting that, that time period for the $4 million TIF in half roughly. And so, so it would seem that our vote is in some way either going to kill the project or not. Is that?
Well, yeah, cor, cor, correct, I think there's two questions in there. First one, yes, well, I don't know if it'll kill the project. It'll definitely make the financial aspect of it a lot more difficult for Mr. Webb because he, he made millions of dollars of improvements to that site based upon the assumption that he would receive somewhere between $2 million and $6 million, depending on when, when it, when it opened. But you are correct that the fact that he does not have a dealership open today, there's a ticking clock. And every second on that clock has some sort of dollar figure that's affixed to it. So the longer that, longer that it is until there is a revenue-producing car dealership there, the less of an opportunity he has to recoup those TIF dollars. If that answered your question.
Any other questions? I guess, let me make a comment. You know, we're basically, we understand that the circumstances were not something that he, you know, with, with what's going on in the world and dealerships, and who knows? You know, that, that goes way beyond what I, my understanding for, for business. But things didn't work out quite the way he planned, apparently. Most of that, I would presume, had to do little, had little to do with anything that he had any control over. But one thing I would say is he's been, he's made a good faith effort to do the things that he and our city have tried to strive to do, and that is to, to turn a piece of property that had zero value into something that's marketable and something that he and the city of Merriam will make money on in the future. He has done that. I think that there, and we, we should appreciate that fact because if he hadn't done anything, that, that place over there would be nothing but a big ditch right now. Where, you know, the future, it looks pretty bright. It may take a little longer than we thought. But he's the one that, that had all the risk. The city had no risk in this matter. I think certainly it would behoove us to consider giving him a little extra time to reach the, the potential that that, that property has. And that's all he's asking for in this extension. Any, any questions about this?
And, and I believe they're on the line if there's any questions specifically for them.
Yeah, I'll just confirm for you. I can see both Richard and Joe on the line. So if there are questions, I'm happy to unmute them.
I don't hear any, so I'll certainly entertain a, a motion and a second on this matter. Mr. Pape.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to move the council approve the third amended and restated Marion Point Redevelopment Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Ms. Hands, would you like to second that?
I would like to second it, Chris Hands.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Pape.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Debold.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
I am going to vote aye, and I'm also going to make the comment that since this agreement first was born in September of 2004, it predates my time on council.
Councilmember Called on.
Aye.
Councilmember Knaff. Councilmember Neal. Sorry, Councilmember Neal, okay. I have your vote, I have your vote, thank you. Motion passes.
Very good, very good. Okay, we have Merriam Community Center CFP updates, and these updates were included in the packet as information items. Anybody have any questions about either the Community Center or CFP updates?
Mayor, if I could just make one quick, quick comment. It, it's not a topic of discussion, it's just a follow-up to an item that I think I shared at the last council meeting about some of the wonky decisions and that we're going to have to think about and how impactful what our neighbors are doing as a result of COVID and how it's going to impact what we're doing. Specifically, Mission, Roland Park and PV have all closed their swimming pools for the season. Fairway is recommending to their council tonight to close their swimming pool. Overland Park recommended to their subcommittee to close their pools. I don't know that that's been blessed by the full council, but it's been recommended to close all of the Overland Park pools. And it's my understanding that Shawnee has not decided what they're going to do, but likely they're going to recommend they only open one, if they open one at all. Most of those decisions, in my opinion, are 51% financial and 49% safety. That's my opinion, just from experience of running swimming pools and the literal amount of money that goes down the drain with swimming pools, despite the fact that they're important and beloved amenities. We're not going to have the same kind of decision tree that they have because we're going to have water in our pools. So we are really going to have to rest on safety when it comes down to, are we able to maintain the safety, social distancing, lifeguards that wear masks, things like that? So we don't have decisions yet, we don't even have a facility that's ready to open yet. But, but it's going to get a little bit stranger if it turns out where we're, we are the only pool that's open in northeast or all of Johnson County. And we might have to make some decisions on who and how we let people in our facility. We are having internal conversations about that right now, but I'm just, again, warning you that this is not going to be a normal decision tree for us to be able to say this is how this is. And likely, in the parlance of John Albanyan, we're going to spill some cups, quite possibly, in this deal. But clearly, we're going to have water in our facility, we have to open our facility. What we do with all of that, how we accommodate the public customer base and maintain safety is going to be an issue. We don't have to make those decisions right now, but at some point in time, we're going to probably have to talk about it. we're going to probably have to talk about it and figure out what makes the most sense. So I just wanted to share that point with you. I do want to tell you that as a result of the phasing back in, we are likely, well, we're not going to open back up the community center, the IBF Community Center. We had said we were going to close it on the 15th of May. We will keep it open for Meals and Wheels on Mondays, and we will open it, we will keep it open for transactional purposes for the new community center as a base of operations as we start to shift into the new building. But by the time that we could likely open that building, which would occur after May 15, it'll be time for us to be moving into the new building. So to open that building when we really could open only one part of it, doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense. So the IBFCC, for all intents and purposes, is closed for the year. We will try to find some way where we can ceremonial-close that down. We do kind of have the idea of lowering the flag there and raising the flag. It's a new one when that time is appropriate. But it is, unfortunately, it's another victim of the pandemic that we're all trying to make decisions and come up with a way of operating in the absence of any sort of guidebook. I'd be happy to answer any questions about that. CIP, all the information's in the packet. Happy to answer any questions about either of those. Just wanted to give an update on community center.
Mr. Engel, since we're kind of on this train here, why don't you just streamline into any staff items you have? I noticed we have a 5701 meeting coming up. Why don't you just talk about that?
Absolutely, that is one of my staff items. So on next Monday at 7:00 PM, we will be having a 5701 Zoom work session where we will discuss the information that we have available. As you will recall, when the 5701 Citizen Committee met for the major, well, they started meeting in the tail end of 18, over into 19, hired a consultant, had a public process, they came out with some recommendations for the city council at that point. And one of which was, in addition to some improvements to that site, was to save as much of the building as possible for possible reuse. The council chewed on that for a little bit and decided that, and I, probably at staff's recommendation, I think appropriately, to have this conversation as part of the budget, since this is clearly going to have a budgetary impact. And they directed staff to get some structural analysis of the facility to see if it was feasible to save just the 1911 portion and what it would cost. So not only feasible structurally, but cost-wise, which feasibility-cost-wise, cost-wise is a decision for council to make. So we have that information. So we will send out, in the next couple of days, a packet with all the Zoom information. We'll push that out on our media outlets so that people can tune in. It will be a work session, so there will not be public comment. I can't tell you that you won't receive comment individually, but we will not accept public comment as part of the meeting, where we, and we will essentially have a conversation of, based on the information that we have, what are the next moves? Is this, is the building something that we want to continue to move forward with? Is doing away with the building the right way? What are our next steps? Because clearly, we are going to vacate that building in the next 45 to 60 days, and we do not have a use for it. So I think it's important that we determine where we need to go. So hopefully, we can tackle that and walk away with some deliverable or directions on Monday at 7:00 PM. That's my first item. Again, we'll have a packet coming soon. A second one is just an update. Staff A and B shifts, as you will recall, we've had 50% of our, almost 50% of our workforce on shift A, 50% of our work shift on, work on shift B. So one was working at work in their workspaces, one was working at home. Everybody was working, it was just where you were. And then every other week, we would shift up, that would, change shifts, go home for a week, or come to City Hall for a week. Again, that was to essentially combat any type of an exposure event so we could continue to offer services to the public, despite the fact that we have the front doors closed, we are still operating. So today, those A and B shifts are back in their workspaces, which is great. I can't tell you how proud I am of everyone. This is, it's not easy to work at home, I will tell you personally. It is not easy to work at home for a week and then come back to work and have everything that you need right there in front of you, and then go back home and realize that, oh, you know, I don't, I forget how much I love my big monitor and all of the things that you get used to. But I do, I'm very, very proud of the perseverance of our staff for the last six months. And we're slowly getting back together and kind of getting back to normal, looking forward to moving through these phases. And not just City Hall, but all of the economy opening back up. Unlike my good friend Scott there, I have a little bit too much hair, and I'm looking for my barber to open back up here sometime soon.
Yeah, I've got a couple long ones on there.
But I'm happy to answer any questions about any of those or any other topics.
All right, looking for hands here. Mr. Neal, did you have something? Yes, go right ahead. Turn the mute there.
Yeah, I don't really know that this is a question directly, but I did want to make a pitch for some, some of the stuff that the NLC is trying to get accomplished over the next week. And I thought I might do that at some point when it's appropriate. So is now, is now appropriate or not, I don't know.
But how long is it?
Not very long.
Right ahead.
Okay, essentially, this week is likely the week that the Senate takes up and is seriously looking at and negotiating an enhancement to the state and local government federal relief in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The NLC and the leadership committees, the federacy committees have basically not been really working on their, their projects. And all hands on deck have been trying to help get the message out that there's huge revenue losses, and there's a couple other problems with the existing legislation. I would, one of the requests are, is that all of the local elected officials reach out to our federal legislators, our Senator Moran in Kansas, Senator Roberts, and Representative Davis is our House representative, and encourage them to vote and include in this relief bill a couple of things. Number one, we need to, they need to allow a, as a COVID-related reimbursement, revenue losses. And one suggestion, part of the problem is that, that there's this argument about, well, how are they going to, what's the metric? Well, the metric could be to compare actual revenues with budgeted revenues. That's an obvious, you know, verifiable amount. So that's one thing. The second problem, the major problem, is that there's really no mechanism to get the money directly to the local government. It's basically so far been envisioned as sort of a block grant to the states that they would then distribute in some manner. So we want, you know, we would like to ask for a mechanism that allows local government municipalities to apply directly for the relief. Those are really the two most important items. And if anyone, not just, not just council members, but anyone out there would be interested in making their voices heard, I think it would be helpful, because we are potentially, not just Marion, but all local government across the country is looking at serious revenue shortfalls due to the economic slowdown. And so, in some cases, this is really important. So I'd encourage everybody to call. And that's basically it. I'm probably going to reach out individually about it, too.
Right, I might remind the council that Mr. Neal has been operating as our representative with the NLC as it relates to these issues, and it has taken his time to represent us. He's gone on, done some travel to do that and much work. So we appreciate the work you've done, Mr. Neal, thank you very much. Let's move forward. There are no further staff items, I presume?
You got, Councilmember Silver says a comment, Mayor.
Silver?
I wanted to thank Mr. Neal for doing all that work. And I was curious if there was wording, sometimes there's existing wording that could help people form those comments that they could send to their representatives to help get the point across easier?
Yeah, send me, send me an email, any of you that are interested. I was going to try to reach out probably tomorrow or the next day and get you whatever information you need, because, yeah, there's some specific bills and so forth that you probably need to reference. But I didn't want to say them all out. You know, right now, I think it would take-
Staff can work as a point of contact on that also. I can reach out to Councilmember Neal and work on that, push that out to the council.
Is it possible to also make that available to the citizens and anyone who's listening to this in case they want to contact as well?
Yeah, we could create some sort of news story or some sort of items somewhere. I think we could probably carve something out like that. I'll have to check with the communication staff, but I would think we could find some appropriate way to have that information be made available.
This is Whitney, sorry, Chris, you go ahead this time. You go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're such a gentleman.
Like, giving it back to you. I'm such a gentleman.
I think that the NLC communications that we get, I think there's some sample stuff in there, and certainly that might be a good place to start. Your turn.
Thank you. I was going to say the C-19 page on Marion.org might be a great place for those to live. It's been very nice to be able to direct people there for information, so.
And our number one visited site by leaps and bounds for the last couple of months. So that's, that's very, very good, that people are reaching out and using that as a resource to get through this pandemic. So I was very pleased to see those numbers.
All right, anyone else? Any new business, Mr. Engel?
No, sir.
There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. State your name, and I'll accept a motion at this time.
You have to be muted.
This is Chris. Am I muted?
No, you're not.
Good. If we adjourn.
Okay, I need a second from someone.
And because I'm not on mute, I will second that.
Second, Councilmember Silver's, all in favor.
Hi.
See you all next week.
So long.
It's really good to see everybody.